I'd like to call this meeting of the Lakota Board of Education to order. Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Casper?
Here.
Mr. Lovell?
Here.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Here.
Mr. Parnell?
Here.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Here.
Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the best will, with liberty, justice, and moral.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Lovell?
Yes.
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes. We just had a reception to meet our new administrators right before the meeting started, so we're very thankful to have many quality and talented administrators that have joined our ranks to replace some folks who've moved on to different positions. So that was nice to have faces to put with all of those great new administrators. So we're thankful for that. With that, I'll turn it over to Matt.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. I'll defer my comments this morning for our special guest. Mrs. Fuller's gonna make a presentation.
Good evening. In May you met, actually in June, you met Ms. Donna, the Cherokee Elementary Custodian who saved a student from choking during the lunch period. Tonight I have the honor of introducing Braden Robinson, a then-fifth grader, soon-to-be-sixth grader, who noticed a fellow student was choking. Braden's quick thinking propelled him into action, alerting Ms. Donna that someone needed help. Braden's gonna join me up here to tell you what happened in his own words.
So I saw Luis, which was the student that was choking, and he was doing the sign, and I realized that he was choking, so I ran over to Ms. Donna and told her that he was choking.
What was the sign that he did, just like that?
Yeah. Which is choking in sign language.
Were you scared?
A little.
Little bit? That's good, that's honest. I would be too.
That Luis's sign?
Yep.
Well, it's a good thing you did that.
Yep.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. Have fun at football.
All right. Is he off to practice? He's now off to football practice.
Yes.
So now we'll move on to Treacher's comments.
Tonight, I just wanted to kind of review a little bit that's been happening at our Welcome Center. As we know, school starts this week. And I'm not sure everybody realizes, though, that we did start and open up enrollment on March the first. So we've been enrolling new students for quite a while. And I asked Pam Ziegler today to pull some data together, so I, we could just, well, internally review it, but then I also wanted to just kind of go over it with you tonight. So we opened up on March the first. We also, this year, have successfully launched a new way that we enroll students. And I know that Mr. Lovell actually went through it personally.
It was phenomenal.
Good, we like to hear that. But it's online now, it's a paperless system. And we also switched from come-one, come-all, first person in line will take you back, sit in the lobby for hours, to an actual appointment. And that seems to be working well. It's way more organized, and people seem to be enjoying the process a little bit more. But since March 1st through last Friday, we've had 1,537 enrollments to the district. We've had 294 withdrawals that we've processed, and 749 address changes. So there's been a lot of things going on. We're still processing enrollments. We have appointments all the way through next week and beyond. We have 149 appointments, still outstanding. Which is a lot. It takes us 24 to 48 hours to process every enrollment, because once it comes through, you've got transportation, you've got to have a class assignment, there's lots of things that have to be done. So we were interested to find out, is that 149, does that sound normal? Last year, it was 189. The year before that, it was 197. So while it seems large, it is shrinking, and we're already meeting and problem-solving about how can we try to even reduce that more moving forward. The other thing I want to mention, too, is that we're doing all of this with one less person in the enrollment center. Through attrition, we did not replace one person. So I just want to applaud the work there. Nothing is ever perfect, but we believe that it's a big improvement over what we've seen in past years, and we're gonna continue to improve the system, so just wanted to report on that.
That's fantastic, and I think that it's worth noting, the reason we're sitting here and having a board meeting here is because we dedicated that space at Central Office to the Welcome Center. Having gone through that process, and just having, knowing the old Welcome Center and where that was located and the environment, I think that we hit it out of the ballpark when we talked about creating a welcoming environment for those families, that this is their first impression of the district. It was a phenomenal experience, from the wait in the front lobby to when you got back and you had that special place that you would go, to the swag that the kids got, and the electronic forms. I mean, no-brainer. It was amazing.
Good.
Yep.
Good to hear.
Yeah.
And you're speaking as a parent?
Yeah. It was phenomenal.
Good.
So Jenny, 149 appointments, new people to the district, people that didn't know when school started?
It's a combination.
That's mind-boggling.
It's a combination, and it could also be address changes, too. So it's a combination of all of those things.
Didn't you say, too, some of the people couldn't come in until?
Correct.
Because of their commitments?
There are some that, no matter, even if we would've been able to offer an early appointment, this is what worked for their schedule as well. And we did do some evening appointments for kindergarten registration, looking at, you know, all options for next year, but it's a big improvement, so.
Yeah, sounds like it. And just such a better, like you said, a better first impression walking into that Welcome Center.
Jenny, we stayed open through July this year?
Yeah, we were open, we, our buildings were closed for what, a couple weeks, I believe? But the Enrollment Center, the Welcome Center, has not closed. We have been open the entire summer.
That's great.
Well, thank you, Pam, to you and your staff.
So with that 149, will some of those kids be starting then after the start, and we'll just roll them into classes as the?
Correct.
Okay.
As we have done in past years, and we'll, yeah.
And Mr. Vogelmann and I were talking about that today. We're gonna lose kids, too, a little bit, that have not withdrawn yet, so it's not necessarily 149 up.
Right.
The yellow bus syndrome. When the yellow buses start drawing around, people start to realize either, oh, I need the withdrawal, or I need to enroll.
Right.
Any other questions for Jenny? Hearing none, it's our first opportunity for public comment pertaining to anything on the agenda. If anyone would like to speak, they may do so now. Seeing no one, we'll go to Board Reports, Community Engagement. I could start?
Yeah, go ahead.
We have three community conversations that are scheduled. The first one is September 11th with our District Parent Council representatives. The next one is September 30th at East pertaining to our finances, and I understand Jenny is going to do a brief presentation, so that'll look a little different than some of them. And then we'll have a discussion after that. And then October 1st, we're partnering at 11:30 with the Chamber, and Randy has sent out a conversation, or an email to the Board with all of these dates and times. So those are the first three that are scheduled.
The finance one is new. He just sent us an email literally like at 6 o'clock, so the other two, we've been on the books. He sent us an email last week about those, but the 30th he added. And then also, based on our conversation at a work session, at our work session in August, I will bring a form that I will give you guys a paper copy, but I'll also have Melissa put it on Board Docs, so that when you have a suggestion for a topic, you can, you know, let us know, or fill it out, send it to me, send it to us however you want. That way, when it's fresh in your brain, you remember it, and you can just fill it out and bring it to a board meeting. I'll have a hard copy for you at the work session, and then I'll have Melissa put it on Board Docs.
And our last community conversation meeting was deferred because Randy had to be out of town.
Yeah.
So we haven't had a community conversation this summer.
For the beginning of the year, so.
Any other comments or questions for community conversations? Butler Tech, career development?
Butler Tech has not met since our last meeting. It will meet again next Tuesday on the 20th.
Great. Legislative? Matt, Jenny?
Yeah, I don't, I mean.
I don't think there really is anything.
Budget stuff has come out, aside from that.
Budget stuff has come out, we're still learning about it every day. The new wellness dollars should be coming to us in October, and we're learning about how to report all of that, so just boring technical stuff at this point.
There is a copy, does everybody get a copy of the, is it called the link? Do we all get a copy of that, or do just Linda and I, legislative reps? Do you know Linda?
Or OSBA? I would say it's probably just the link, or just us.
Okay. Because on this last?
Legislative updates from who sent it?
Will, Will Schwartz.
I get the briefcase.
No, this is called the link. I'll send it, I'll forward it, only because in it it has the, what the dollars are for the budget, but it, again, it will also tell you in the body of it that it's just an estimate, so, just so you can see it.
The other thing I'll just add real quick, if I can, on the graduation requirements, and Mr. Coney and I were talking about this earlier today, it's very clunky coming out of Columbus about every class has a different requirement, so we're trying to streamline that. Once we get the school year started, we're gonna Lakota-ize it.
Okay.
We're continuing to see shifts in what's going to be happening with the state positions, both Representative and Senator next year, and I think that will continue through the fall. So we'll just wait till the end of that process before we report out on it. I did also pass on to Matt, there were some guidelines issued by the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration and the Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services. It's a joint informational bulletin to schools and to school systems and to states as well with information about addressing mental health and substance use issues in school. So we'll expect that to start to inform some of our wraparound services as we look at those dollars coming in the fall. Anything else, Kelly?
No, but that's all. We're still on a break, so not a lot going on.
That's it? Any other questions for Legislative? All right, under New Business, we have a presentation by Neil Hughes of the Village of North, Village North Proposed Development.
Hi, Neil.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Neil Hughes, and I'm president of Southeast Investment Realty out of Atlanta,
Georgia. I think you may have received our package about our Village North project. Did everyone get a copy of that?
It was what I put on Board Docs.
On Board Docs.
Yeah.
Yep.
And I have some additional packages if you need them.
Okay.
And the Village North is a 49-acre piece of property located at the intersection of Butler Warren Road and Liberty Way, and it's split between Westchester Township and Liberty Township. It's directly across the street from Voice of America Park. It's an extremely unique piece of property that the Davis family had farmed for nearly 40 years, and during that time, the whole world grew up around them. So it was really quite remarkable to have that unique type of property still there and undeveloped all these years later. And when I came up and looked at it, I realized it was just an absolutely unique piece of property for so many reasons, and we wanted to design something that fit within the feel of that Voice of America Park, and not do another commercial, concrete jungle type of design on the property. I have a saying about doing large projects, I tell people, it's like peeling an onion. You take it in layers, and sometimes it makes you cry. So this has been no exception. It's been a long process. We've spent a long time with all the different stakeholders, starting with the homeowner groups that surround our property. I'm very proud to say that when we had our final zoning hearing at Liberty Township, 24 people came out to speak. And in the developers' world, when 24 homeowners come out, it scares you to death. Only one spoke against us. 23 stood up and spoke in favor of us. And one of the reporters in the room thought she was gonna see pitchforks and torches when she saw that many homeowners, and she pulled me aside afterwards, said she'd never seen that before. So I'm a big believer of, you know, taking the time, try to understand everybody that's involved, and, you know, address it as a community. And that's the reason that I'm here in front of you today. I've been told by staff, it's not normal for the developers to go talk with the school board, and I said, "Well, to me, it's the most normal thing in the world." Just as we're talking to seniors that are gonna be participants with our senior care facilities and the other players involved, I think it's real important for a lot of reasons, from a community standpoint, and from some of the support that we're looking to have in regards to the development. So Village North is going to be a mixed-use property. One thing that's extremely unique about it, most of these large mixed-use properties, and you can think of a lot of them that have been done lately, when you pull up, you see a mile of parking lot, parking garages. That's exactly the look I didn't want. So we've saved over 30% of the property into parks and green spaces, and that's a very unique layout. The property's been on the market for some time now, and Liberty Township has denied every application of developers coming in and trying to develop it, because they couldn't satisfy what they felt was a very sensitive piece of property. And we are very fortunate to have gotten unanimous approval from both municipalities. The next steps on the journey in regards to getting this property done, the good news about the property, it's a beautiful property, very unique, real heavy on amenities. And the bad news about the property, it's very unique, very heavy on amenities, and very expensive to develop. So as has been done successfully in this community in the past, there's been work involved between the municipalities and the developers through the use of TIFs to have offset some of those costs. So one of the things that we're doing is we're going before the different county and the two townships to talk about the TIFs. And as you all are much more aware of than I am, not too many years ago, the municipalities could put TIFs on the property with no addressing of the school board's concerns. And there is an existing TIF on a portion of the property, the Westchester portion, where the school board's only getting 35% of that revenue. So I have put together a spreadsheet that you may have seen in the earlier information. And what we're, the cutting to the chase, my brother's a dentist, and the first time he worked on my teeth, he looked down at me and said, "This is the first time I ever asked you to open your mouth wider." Why don't you give me a microphone, so I know we have a limited amount of time? What I'm proposing is taking the contribution in the Westchester side, that's currently 35% of the school board, and asking the county to release that portion of the property from the existing TIF, and let Westchester put a new TIF on. That would allow us to raise the contribution to the school board from 35% to 50%. The trustees with Westchester are very accepting of this and extremely supportive of it. Right before I came here, I met with Judy, the administrator with the county, and I met with Kristen, the administrator with Liberty Township, to go over this before we spoke, make sure I wasn't stepping on any toes. They haven't, the county hasn't made any commitment, but they were not unfavorably disposed to that comment, to that concept. So that would be a big financial increase over what it could've been if they just keep that TIF in place. The second portion of this, and I know it may be a little bit confusing when you look at it, the top portion of this is the Liberty Township portion. The bottom portion is the Westchester portion. And the very bottom line is the net to the school. So based on these revenues, we're looking at generating $2,245,000 in revenues to the school district. And we're anticipating, based on our market studies and demographics, of adding approximately 50 students to the school system under this. So needless to say, that's a much bigger ratio than normal of tax contribution to school, student enrollment. And unlike some of the TIFs that have been done, which basically use up 100% of the tax revenues, we're pretty limited to what we're requesting. So we're generating a total of $4,490,000 in tax revenues, and we're looking for $775,000 annually for the servicing of the debt. So as a percentage of the debt to the tax revenue, it's a very low number comparatively. It's still a big number, but comparatively, it's a very low number. So we're excited about it. The property is unique because of its design, because of its green spaces. It's not a big box mixed-use center. It's a village, and that's why we've named it Village North. And we will have restaurants, we will have retail, we'll have office buildings, we'll have a grocery store. We're anticipating somewhere between 150 to 200 full-time employees. We think the total economic impact on the community will be about $350 million. So it's been a long journey. We've been working on this for about a year and a half. We're trying to get to the finish line before the end of the year, if possible, and we're very excited about it, and we're very encouraged by all the support we've had on so many levels from so many people, particularly the community around us. Normally, when you go around golf courses, higher-end communities, they don't want, they're what we've referred to in our business as NIMVs, not in my backyard. This is the reverse. They want this in their backyard, and the homeowner associations have actually been working with us. We did a focus study that we sent out to all the residents, asking their opinions on what they'd like to see in the condominium flats, and there's 54 condominium flats, and 50 of the residents already signed up on a VIP list. So it tells me that there's just not this kind of product. There's a lot of larger homes in that area, and there's nowhere for people of my generation, once you get older and there's a big house, there's nowhere to go. You can go down, try and go into in-town, or go to apartment renting, and people don't want to do that, so they're basically living in place because there isn't an alternative. We're gonna be building four-story townhomes with rooftop terraces overlooking the golf course. They'll have elevators. We're gonna be doing high-end luxury condominium flats that are overlooking our park area. So it's just a very unique design, it's a very unique product, and from what everybody's telling me is, I have one question at every public hearing, when is it starting? How much are those condos? So it's a great feedback, and we're so grateful to be part of the community, and I am so fortunate to be partners with Justin Doyle, that owns Justin Doyle Homes. He's built something like $50 million in homes in your community. He built, he's won the Homaram Awards every year for the last seven or eight years. Last year, he won Home of the Year for the State of Ohio. He's an engineer by profession, and he builds the most spectacular homes anywhere that I've seen, and I'm proud to have him as a partner, and what he's bringing to the mix is gonna be just phenomenal. So we're very excited about it, and the purpose today is to introduce myself, introduce the property. As I understand the process, Liberty Township would then come back and make a formal request, and then the, under the state law, you would have 45 days to respond to that request. So I can't ask for a show of hands, wouldn't deny you if you did. But, you know, we're looking for your support. We think it makes a lot of sense. We've made a lot of adjustments to the design and the plan to try and accommodate everybody, and we're working on that this afternoon. Everybody wants a tunnel now under Liberty Way, so all those people, there's real issues with the kids having to cross at Liberty Way and Butler Warren, it's very dangerous. So we're including in our TIF for the county, a substantial contribution to put that tunnel underneath Liberty Way, and that way, people that are at the Voice of America Park can come and go to our areas for entertainment and for restaurants, and that way, people that live at Four Bridges and Heritage Club, they can come through our community on their bikes, trikes, scooters, whatever their form of transportation is, and get direct access to the park without facing the hazards of crossing such a busy intersection. Anyone have any questions? I'd be happy to.
Have you formally filed the TIFs? Have you formally filed the TIFs?
No, we haven't formally done it. We are still working on our numbers. We had an interesting conversation with Kristen today. These numbers to the school board may increase fairly substantially, because she's indicated that our straight residential-for-sale ownership product cannot be applied for the payment of a TIF, which means it would increase the tax revenues available to the school board. So based on those conversations, I'm gonna adjust these numbers before you get a formal request to show you the numbers that will be there. So it's great news for the school board, it's more money out of my pocket, so we have to figure out how all that'll work.
And we appreciate that.
Thank you.
What is the timeframe at this point?
It's gonna be fairly immediately. We met with Judy. It's a little bit like corralling cats, so we're trying to get everybody to kind of line up and walk in the same direction. But in talking with the trustees with Liberty Township, they were going to, once we work out the final numbers, which we should probably have in the next couple of days, then we would make a, put ourselves on the agenda for Liberty Township to make a request for the TIF. There'll be a minor zoning change, and where we're changing the streets from private to public, there has to be a development agreement for the ongoing maintenance of the common areas by the master association and not by the municipality, and these were some of the details we were working out today. So once we get on their agenda, all the feedback I have from both municipalities is they're, you know, they're gung-ho, they really want to see this happen. So I'd imagine in the next four weeks, I'm hoping that we'll get the approval to move forward, and they'll make the submittal to you then. It's a little bit like a chicken and the egg, because, well, is the school board gonna approve it before we go through all this, or, you know, and they have to submit it to you first, but they gotta make the application. So I'm sure they'll look for some feedback, you know, through Kristen, to Jenny, and you all to just know that you're kind of looking in the same direction. And then they'll go ahead and they'll do an approval of it, then they'll come back to you and ask you for approval. Once we do that, there are some issues we had to determine with the county, because the county would have to give up their control over the Westchester side. The Westchester trustees have made comments like, they wouldn't only TIF their portion, they'll TIF Liberty's portion, let's just get this thing going. So they're very, very enthusiastic. So I know that we'd be put on the agenda immediately if the county would be agreeable to that. So our choices are let the existing TIF stay in place, and the county then would, we'd use the funds from that, or remove the county from the TIF, which I really feel is kind of the direction it's heading, and then that would, that's great for everybody, because Westchester will do it the next morning. And it increases the revenues to you all, and our numbers already work, because we have so many of the parcels already committed for development as soon as we break ground, so we're not worried about it. That's one of the concerns you always have with TIFs, is are they actually gonna build the buildings and get them out of the ground? And we've already got the apartments are sold, the condos, townhome single-family, the senior living, the first office building, we have so much of it already fully committed that we're not- that we're not concerned about having the revenue to service based on the minimum payment guarantee. And working with Tom Gabelman with Frost and Brown, we're also setting up where there's a three-year interest reserve built into the TIF bonds to make sure that if something's delayed, the money's there to, to service the debt and to keep everything moving forward. So it's been quite a learning experience.
Would this be a 30-year TIF agreement?
Yes, ma'am.
And would there be any renewability clauses in it, or how would that work?
I think under state law, and again, I'm, I'm not an expert, I've just paid an expert an arm and a leg to find out about this stuff. I, I need a TIF for my legal bills. Is that there is a, a system in place that allows for the renewal of them by the municipalities. So I don't know all the nuances of it, but it's my understanding that's kind of what happens, because we've been reviewing a lot of ones that are already in place and looked at all the things that's happened, the history. I've, I've got, I'm a real history buff, and I've got quite a historical background on the world of TIFs and Lakota School Board and a lot of the things that have happened. So I understand there's been a history, but things have calmed down and things are better, and you guys are in the catbird seat with the change in the state legislature, which is, I believe, how it should be, and so we're thrilled to be a participant in the process.
Great.
I want to say, thank you for shifting the paradigm for us. This is not how it's normally been approached, and I think this is a great direction for us to be heading.
Thank you. And it was a joy to watch that little boy, reminds me of my grandson. Y'all have a great job.
Hero. Thank you.
Thank you.
For coming and presenting.
You too.
Now we have approval of Board Minutes. Do I have a motion for Treasurer's Recommendation A?
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
Second. You can have it.
Linda, any discussion? Hearing none. Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
We have Superintendent's Recommendations, A through D, approval of personnel, field trips, approval of an anchor easement between Duke Energy and Lakota, and approval of donations. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Matt, could you walk us through new replacement?
I'm sorry?
Could you walk us through how many of these are new positions?
You should have an attachment with that.
I think it was on the.
If you look at page, do you have the attachment?
I'm not showing an attachment.
It's on your screen.
Yeah. And there's a column that says status.
See new positions or replacement? Right. There are very few new positions. Couple of them are substitutes, most of, a lot of those are temporary, but there, there are not a lot on here. I see, let me just go through really quick. Most of them are replacements. I see two new positions, which are long-term subs. I see intervention assistant, two intervention assistants that are new, the rest of them are replacements or temporary as needed.
Is it possible for us to get at the bottom of this, a total of those running numbers for the year, when we do this in the future?
Sure.
It's been a little while since we looked at this, but I know we dug out the way that we used to do it, and I believe we sent it in an email, but we can resend it just to make sure that that's how we want it to look, and then we can change the way that we present that.
If we, I don't know what that was, but.
Volleyball, I don't know. But yes.
If we could do a running total for the, for the year, and then with a long range, just so we understand how many new positions we're adding, or if we're doing it through attrition or whatever approach you're taking?
Got it.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
This brings us to our second opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone who would like to address the Board at this time, they may do so. Seeing no one, we'll move to closing comments. Brad?
I don't think I have anything, just looking forward to convocation tomorrow, and seeing all the staff come back and all fired up and ready to go, but other than that.
Yeah, excited for a new year. I did want to say that I had the opportunity on Saturday to pass out backpacks for Reach Out Lakota, and the partnership that we have with them is amazing. Passed out over 500 backpacks and school supplies. And they did a little different this year. They gave, like, people the donation like a monetary value of ranges, so there was a lot of really nice backpacks, there was a lot of choices of backpacks, and the kids are so excited, and the parents are so grateful. There was many, many thank yous and many decisions. I had the K6 job, so sometimes the first grader trying to pick out a backpack does not go so swimmingly, and then, you know, it was the case of the mom wanted to pick this one, and the kid wanted this one, but it was actually really fun, and I, I just, I really appreciate the partnership we have with them.
Who won, the mom or the kid?
In most cases, the kid, I have to say. I think the mom was like, you know, pick my battle, and this isn't it. So, that's it.
Following up on Kel, what Kelly has said, I think that we have a tremendous number of community organizations that are doing great things for our kids, and just want to say a, a general thank you for that. And it's never more evident than at the beginning and the end of the school year. Also, thank you and welcome to our new administrators. I think it would be really nice to have some faces with names on a sheet of paper as we shift positions and buildings again. Don't give me that sardonic look, I'm being serious here now. I think it would be really helpful just to see where we're moving the chess pieces around, so, thanks for all the great work that happens at the start of the year.
I have no comments. Thank you.
Me either, no.
Looking forward to welcoming back our staff tomorrow and welcoming new faces as well, probably almost 2,000 people at convocation tomorrow. Doors open at eight, kickoff at nine, so hope to see everybody there.
Like to say, we had, one of the donations we accepted was the Freedom Parent Council Organization donated $25,000, nearly $25,000 in value for their playground equipment. So again, a thank you for that partnership with our PTO, and again, looking forward to a great start of year, the year. Can't believe we're already at this point. And with that, we are going to move into executive session. We will not be taking any action when we come out of executive session, but I need a motion to enter into executive session.
So moved.
To consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official, and to discuss pending or possible litigation with Board Legal Counsel.
So moved again.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Jenny, will you please, oh, I need to, well, Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Parnell? Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Thank you.